Mike will not be joining us, so Diane, you're the only alternate with us. So would you please sit for Mike?
Yes, of course.
First order of business is the minutes of June 15th, which were uploaded. I have a couple of comments. Line 32, it should say that I returned, I guess. Line 75, it's a knit, but the Meadowwood property is in Simsbury. There isn't any North Simsbury in terms of any real geography.
Actually, if it was a small letter N rather than a capital.
But we're all wary of large and small letters these days.
We are, okay. Personally, I don't care. If you want to tinker with it, okay.
I don't either, but it's Simsbury is town. And number 109. Diane was not seated, so she could not have seconded yet. So we must have, it must have been Donna. Actually, I think it was Donna.
Probably. Probably.
Yeah, Laura. So the change that 109 to show that Donna Feinstein seconded the motion to adjourn. So we don't get in trouble. Anybody got any others?
I don't, I don't have a correction. I just want to offer a comment that as I've read the section or the segment of these minutes that are associated with the presentation relative to the Board of Selectmen referral to us on the Meadowwood potential purchase. I'm, I have no problem with condensing information to make it shorter, but as I look back on it and you see there was a three to three vote and the thing was, was, you know, not successful. There isn't one reason given for why anyone would have voted for it or against it. It's just the outcome is there and the highlights of the presentation are there. But so I guess I offer the question, maybe for discussion later. What's the point here? If we're not, you know, creating something more substantial than this.
Well, the purpose of minutes is to record votes and not necessarily everybody.
Not a transcript, right? I get that part.
Anyway, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Actually, I don't know if you mentioned it, but I also just noticed on line 32, it's also its technical difficulties were remedied, not where. I'm sure when she's correcting the line, she would notice that. I just figured I'd mention it.
Okay. I hear a motion to accept them as, or did you make a motion?
Me, I'll make the motion. I make the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
You're a second?
I'll second it.
Diane, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry six, nothing. Okay. The next item of business is the public hearing, which we opened last time. And I believe the applicant wants us to continue that, is that right?
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's correct. The applicant has requested that, that the public hearing be tabled or continued to the next meeting.
Okay, do we have to take any action on this?
No, you, you've already opened the hearing, continued it. It's just, it can be continued.
Okay. All right, on to the next subject. Our zoning regs have been approved and are in force as amended or as updated. We had intended to continue to examine those regulations and to make changes to them as appropriate. I put together some thoughts, which I put up on the, on the Dropbox. And I thought that could start a discussion of what do we do next in the way of looking at zoning regs?
I'm all for that discussion, but let me just raise the question first. What, what happened to the regulations that we approved on, on June 1st?
They're in effect.
But they're, how would you know that? I mean, I look at the town, our homepage and on the zoning commission homepage, it has the June 2019 regulations 15 minutes ago when I last looked. So I wanted to see the June 1st minutes to see what the date was that we agreed they would be.
It was June, I think it was June 29th when they were effective, the vote that they made.
Okay. And so they appear shortly on the town, on the, on our, the town website or what?
They should, they will, they should be uploaded. I thought we uploaded them last week, but I, I'll talk to Laura. I'll talk to Laura about that. We'll make sure that they're uploaded this evening.
Thank you.
Mike, I thought you were going to get somebody to.
Which that's my next step, but, but that shouldn't slow you down on these other projects that Dave has brought up for the attention to the board.
Well, that won't slow us down on that, but if I was an applicant or developer considering coming to Simsbury, I'd want to see the zoning regulations. And right now, when you look at the town, our, the town website, the zoning regulations are from June 2019, not June 2020. And so I think it's important to contribute, to present to people who haven't seen those regulations, something that's contemporary and the latest version. And I'm, I'm going to assume too, Mike, I know you've had told us that Bob DiCrescenzo blessed those changes that we made. I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding that. He has read and approved what we passed on that night. Okay.
That's correct.
That comes up in the future. There won't be any doubt about Bob's advice on any of the changes that we made.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, your speaker, your microphone is not picking you up well.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe I'll sit closer to it. Maybe that'll help. Raise my voice, I don't know. Or I'll shut up, one or the other.
Bruce, Bruce, just to follow up, I just went on the town website. We, we have the effective, the new regs up there, effective June, June 29th, 2020. So we actually have them live.
Okay, well.
I think you're seeing something different because I'm seeing what Bruce is seeing. And in fact, it's funny, when I click on it, I was going to say I'm getting prompted for a password. So I wonder if maybe it's been updated somehow, right? Because I'm seeing what Bruce is seeing.
Hold on, let me, let me screen, I'll screen share everyone what I'm seeing. Just, I, that's so weird.
Well, it's not that important right now. Maybe you can look at it later. I don't want to.
No, no, you're right. You're right. You're right. It won't, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that the right version is uploaded to later this evening. And if I have to follow up with IT tomorrow, if there's any issues on our end.
Okay, thank you.
There are, there are times, Bruce, when your cache keeps what was there the last time you looked. And sometimes you have to clear the cache to get it, to do the latest stuff.
How would I know that?
Well, when you get last year's regs.
But unrelated.
It's one of those stupid things that happens.
Is there any members that want a, a hard copy of the regulations? Because we could prepare a hard copy of those effective regs and deliver them to your home.
Well, let's wait until they get massaged and.
In final form.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Okay.
Okay, on to the workshop. Let me just go through the first paragraph that I put down here. We had looked at our zoning regs and in the last several years, I think we had agreed that planned area development needed some review, sign regulations needed review, workforce overlay housing zone needed, or could, I think we agreed all of those should be looked at again as to whether they're doing what we want and so forth. So my first thought is we can't do them all at once. But in general, under manufacturing dispatching theory, the, the way to get the most done is to do the things that take the shortest amount of time. That gets you the most things done over some period of time. And if we can agree on that, we should look at these areas, look at the issues involved, and try to assess the relative effort in each area. Do you guys comment on that whole long word, your long?
I, if, if no one else has a comment, my thought was just that I understand that that sequencing, Dave, and I'm not suggesting that we not do that. I just wanted to say that when I think about that and I look at these issues, I start thinking about where's the money in terms of development and the economic impact on the town of Simsbury? And I'm just going to offer two content items that contrast on that point. And one is the sign regulation and the other is the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code. Now, if there's something, and the way that you summarize the concern sort of for that issue related to the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code, I got the implication that there's something that, that, that regulation as it stands now is somehow an impairment to, you know, encouraging some economic activity on the 70, 40 acres or whatever the open area is there versus the sign regulations, which I know we get, there's concern and it seems to be more regular certainly than we're going to get with the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code. But if we could do something to alleviate concern or to, you know, make the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Codes more effective than it is now, where we could get potentially to encourage economic development on that, the, the town of Simsbury would be much better served in the short run for the Simsbury Form-Based Code being improved and getting a tenant or a purchaser or somebody in there on that other acreage. But I don't know, that's just another way of setting a priority. And I understand that our, we all have ends to our terms and I'm wondering if we can, you know, if we could deal with all of these in our terms, that would be a great thing. I have a suspicion we might not be able to. That's a real.
Well, I.
Challenge.
Kevin, you have any thoughts?
I thought there was a proposal going around for the Hartford site. You know, and, you know, based on the current code will be sort of more of the same, I assume, which is kind of disappointing. I'm going to guess address the sign regulations because that also impacts a lot of small business guys.
I, I think there's some things about the sign regulations that Mike has said that there are constraints that have come up and because of court decisions that really make a lot of our content control non-applicable. And.
Oh, okay, well.
The, the other thing with it is the capability of four color big displays, which essentially can act as signs and the LED-based signs that have been asked for and used in a lot of places are prohibited by our not rear lit. So maybe we, maybe if we solve that problem and fix the, the, the areas that we, we can't control, would that be something that we could get done quickly? I don't know. Donna?
Um. I mean, signs has been a problem, so it's just going to be interesting to see how everybody feels about it. But yeah, it seems like the simplest thing to tackle. The other ones are going to get kind of complicated. My feeling.
Diane, you got any comments?
Sorry. Well, you know, I'm not nearly as familiar with all of these different list items as everybody else is. So I would say yes, as far as Bruce is concerned, I totally agree about anything that would support economic development in the town. But as far as Donna and, you know, I also, I, what little I do know about zoning so far is that there's a lot of complaints about signs. So if that is something easy to tackle, I would say, I would agree with everybody else pretty much as far as priorities.
Diane? You have any comments, Anne? Anne?
She's frozen. I think she's frozen.
Are you frozen, Anne? Mike, do you have any comments on that? You know, I'm jumping in and saying that we could fix the content part of it quickly. I don't know if that's true.
So, so it's funny, it's funny you say that. I've actually asked that question of Bob DiCrescenzo because what, what, what the Mr. Chairman's referring to is, is a, is a US Supreme Court case along with a Connecticut Supreme Court case that basically said towns cannot regulate based on content, towns cannot regulate signage based on the users. So there's some examples out there of what's, what they call commonly Reed versus Gilbert proof sign regulations, which we could share with the commission as a fix to our current regs. But I think also your other comment, Dave, is, is, is a great one about the internally lit signs, whether we want to open that debate again with the new technologies, it's LED that's available, et cetera. Because you're, we're getting a lot of inquiries about different types of signage in my office right now. And the, the canned answer that most nine out of 10 applicants get is that that proposal does not meet the current regulations.
Right. One of the things that bothers me is that the guy who took over the, we talked barber shop couldn't put back up the barber pole that was there for years and years and years. And somehow rather we, we've done worse than just prevention. Anne, you're back?
I'm back. I keep losing you. I don't know is my connection or is the weather, but you keep spacing out on me, so I'm sorry. I, I, I like your order. I think you're, you're a hundred percent on for doing things that you can get done quickly and feel like you've accomplished a lot. But I do agree that I think perhaps we should look at the sign regulations first because I do know that's a big problem. Whether you're a town building such as the library or whether or not, you know, you're a new people coming into town, or example is that barber shop. So I, I guess my vote would be to do the signage and then do the things that we can accomplish quickly first.
Okay.
There are two pieces to the sign though, Dave. There's the general townwide sign and then this town center. Because the town center has different regs and, and we've run into them already, you know, with the color backgrounds and stuff. So we probably need to do both, both fine regs.
I think we should make them the same. I don't know why the town center would be different. What do you think?
I guess we'll have to take a look at them and see where they're different. I'm not, not sure.
I mean, I know they're different because we got caught in that once. Maybe Mike can help us there.
Yeah, I, what, what we could do is, let me see if I can get it for the next meeting. I can compare the two regulations and tell you what you can and cannot do. Your center zone regs, you know, just without going in-depth analysis right now, limit the size. There are some content regulation that, that you do in your center zone versus the townwide regs, which is a little more generous, but they still limit free standing size. But, you know, they're limited to maximum size of 32 square feet for free standing sign versus the center, which is 16, I believe, square feet.
And I think the town center is a little more restrictive. You said generous, but I think it's more restrictive because it, it's intended for more walking rather than high speed driving by. So, you know, on Route 10 elsewhere, you need a bigger sign than you do downtown.
I think you said that. Outside the center zone was less restricted.
Yes, yes.
That's what I heard.
Okay, less restrictive, okay. But, but we do need to see that, that court cases, like you can get a sentence that stuff too.
Yes, I can. I can do that. So what I could do is probably prepare a packet with the court case. I could prepare what Bob D gave me a while ago on a Reed versus Gilbert proof example of what, what those regulations look like. And then is there anything else the commission wants for the next meeting?
Not necessarily for the next meeting, but is there a way to get some kind of economic evaluation of our current pad developments that are mostly residential? I mean, you get a lot of people that are saying that, you know, they cost more than regular housing and others will tell you that it, that it's more beneficial tax-wise than residential.
So I have, I have the numbers of what each of the multifamily developments are paying right now in personal property. I also have the school enrollment data for those properties. So it would tell us, you know, basically this one pays X dollars, but yet uses Y amount of services from the town.
Right, do we have the police records too?
Uh, I do for Dorset Crossing in that area because the town of Granby requested that information a while ago. I could try to get some more up to date. I, I need time to get up, up to date data on the, all the developments, but.
It doesn't need to be next time, but if, you know, it's just a longer range plan.
Yeah, well, I mean, for the next, I can have for the next meeting uploaded to your packet, property tax and school enrollment, no problem.
Okay.
And then I can get you the police responded, response for a later meeting.
Okay, we're going to just need that as the community starts to talk about this stuff.
Okay.
If we get into the other regs, I think we'd like to have that back up. Okay, do we have any comments on any of these other issues? Somebody want to talk about them? You know, the Hartford Form-Based Code, it's, it's really turning out to be planned area development, really. It's, it's the same thing as we've gotten in these other locations. And the same kind of thing has happened. We forced them to build a building in front that so far is not occupied. And it seems like in these, these areas, we, we demand that something that we, when we have mixed use, that we demand that something gets done as well as the main interest that the developer has. And that mixed use component doesn't happen. It isn't, it isn't financially viable or whatever.
We've always done a horizontal mixed use. We've never done vertical. You know, the horizontal separates it out into separate buildings and that's how we get what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other question I have is mixed use sensible in a more suburban environment like we are as opposed to the city like West Hartford and Hartford? We, we haven't had much luck. We had, if you look at the pad that was done with the gas station, you know, the Cool Barn, the guy went ahead, Evans, Elliot went, or Evans, I'm sorry, went ahead and renovated that whole thing, but somehow or other those, that building is still not occupied. It's sitting there idle, which was the thing that was driving us in the first place. And Bruce, you have.
I was wondering if we can get some feedback from the developers. Mike, can you, is that something you could, you're comfortable with?
Yeah, well, which, which developers and maybe just like a kind of parameter of what kind of feedback you're looking for, you, do you want?
Yeah, does the reg work or doesn't it for them?
Okay.
For the, for the gas station, okay, he, you know, what's, what's preventing him from renting that building? I mean, he did a nice job. Well, why can't he rent it though? I mean, apartment wise, he's got a second floor of apartments and it seems like most of the apartments in town are being rented. So what's wrong with his apartments other than you're overlooking a gas station? But.
That's your answer. Yeah, exactly.
But, you know, I'd like to hear from him. I mean, and he doesn't seem to be, have any urgency about it. But, you know, that other look, the downstairs location, it looks like he designed it to be a restaurant. And, you know, why doesn't that work? For the Hartford site, you know, are they really having that much trouble leasing that? And then, you know, what, what Donna mentioned is, you know, is that design wrong in that, you know, a coffee shop somewhere in that complex would seem to make sense. You know, something that all those people could walk to, but we kind of put it on the fringe. Does that work or not work for them? Because, you know, were they thinking that they would get, you know, Route 10 traffic? And that doesn't happen or, yes, I'd just like to see what they say about it. And I, I think you've mentioned that, you know, they're, they're looking at something for the south end and then it, is it that much different than the north Hartford product, project? You know, I'm not sure how we can drive more, more profitable development for, for the town.
Maybe we should have other types of mixed use. For example, agriculture. We said, okay, the open space or the component of it that is commercial is now to be satisfied by putting a farm in there, some agricultural use.
Yeah. First, that gives you less taxes, but.
Pardon?
That gives you less taxes.
Well, you're not getting any taxes now because.
Well, you got a building, so you get taxes on an empty building more than you would on agricultural land.
If you could start integrating businesses, especially if you did it vertically, but that would be important to the community. I mean, if you had a childcare business, if you had, you know, based on what type of communities moving in, I mean, these apartments, if you had, you know, space for people to telecommute, if you had office space, if you had coffee shops, if you had things like that, integrated into the buildings such that the, the community would embrace, you know, whatever kind of business went in there like that. It seems like that's kind of a built-in success. Whereas what we're trying to do is just put another restaurant on the fringe, hope somebody stays in there and people want to go and.
But we encourage people to come up with their own proposals. We haven't constrained them in, in any way as to what kind of commercial they put in there.
Yeah.
Right, although with the, with the special zones though, you kind of tried to encourage some kind of mixed use. And, you know, when they, when they did the code on the Hartford, you know, they, they, there was a lot of mixed use mentioned in the, in that code that never has happened.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, with my, yeah, I was going to say with my ignorance, you know, coming into this just as, as a residence, you know, we've, we've been talking about mixed use for ever. I remember the Shirets and all of that, but I'm pretty sure all we've gotten is housing, you know, like as far as I can see, maybe there has been, you know, there's been a lot of talk about rezoning things to be mixed use, but all it really seems to have resulted in is a lot more housing. And, and I understand, like you said, you can't force people to build something if they don't want to build it, but I, I would love to have a little place that had a coffee shop and a, and all that in one building. I think that's, that sounds lovely. I don't know exactly. Again, I guess, again, you can't force people, but anything we can do to encourage actual mixed use would be great.
Well, can everybody?
Well, I have the same problem with affordable housing too. We've got the 830G, the 296 units that were approved and have been sitting there idle since 2014 because builder doesn't want to build them.
And well, I, I happen to know Tony Giorgio sort of personally as well as professionally. And, you know, his development up there at Dorset Crossing, there's a guy who's dying to build something, but he can't find any takers. But I think there was a good suggestion made about trying to get some feedback from developers that I know, I'm quite sure Tony would be willing to offer some thoughts on, you know, what could, what could we do to help him, you know, develop the rest of his property up there, which he's ready, willing and able to do, but he can't find people who want to be there for a variety of reasons. But he might be someone we could get. uh, people who want to be there for a variety of reasons, but he might be someone, we could get others, uh, give us some thoughts.
We can put some of these guys on the agenda and have them come talk to us. You know, when I was in planning fifteen, twenty years ago, we had the developer of Blueback Square come out and tell us about mixed-use and, and what needed to happen to make it work. And uh, we had um, oh, Mike uh, from Conover come talk to us about.
Coleman.
Uh, Mike Coleman and the uh, talked us about all of their developments and how things were done. And then there was a guy from uh, oh, Marshalls and that group of people. Uh, who came and talked about how they decided to do developments. It was very interesting results that are discussions. Uh, the people that, the people from uh, old Marshall's parent with their, um, they, they said the way they do their developments, they go to a town, they go to the the mayor or the chief executive or whatever, and they talk to them about what they want to do. And get their advice. And then they talk to the other officials like zoning in the, in the town. The next thing they do is they go to the neighborhood and they have a meeting with the neighbors. And at any point, if someone raises their hand and says, I don't know, they go to the next town. That's the way they decide things. And uh, we, I don't know that we hear that much from people with development ideas. Mike, they don't seem to come to talk to us.
Well, yeah, we've heard periodically from Mark Greenberg.
Yeah, Mark Greenberg has been, Bruce is right, the consistent developer that's been coming through to this commission lately.
Yeah, I drove by Route forty-four on the Canton Town Line again today thinking, I wonder where Mark Greenberg's development is. Cause he went ahead and bought that land and spent a lot of money on it. And we gave them the change they wanted and nothing so far.
Actually, Bruce, on that, on that subject, you will be receiving an application soon for, with that.
Oh, good.
He has, he has a portion of the site, a, a commercial development lined up. And they're, they're running a feasibility study on uh, the balance on what to do. So he's, he's, he's been, that's why you keep seeing him come on your agenda, cause he's been, he's, he has potential projects coming.
That's good to hear. Actually, you know, on his development there with the, on the Canton-Simsbury Town Line, um, he persuaded the restaurant, the new restaurant owner to hold off for a year and then come in with him on his project and somehow that would be a great benefit to him. And I, as I drove by there today and that restaurant's a pretty seedy-looking place these days. I was thinking, boy, I wonder if the guys wondered if he made a mistake, but if the development is close at hand, timing-wise, maybe they're all feeling good now. Then it's close at hand. Yeah, good for them. Why, Opi comes back to us with something that we feel good about for uh, you know, the space at the end of Old Meadow Plain too. I guess.
Got any other comments about any of the issues that we uh, got any other issues that we missed?
No, I don't want to be repetitive. I was a little bit disabled for a while. I had to switch computers. So I missed a little bit of the discussion, but anyway, I know you.
But we, we, we do have probably a list of five. If we can get the Tony Giorgio, Mark Greenberg, the guys at the Hartford site, even Rich Korea. And uh, Highcroft guys, if they would just talk about.
Oh, the Highcroft guys would be good too, yeah.
Well, okay, let me get back. So we're going. Tommy Evans, Tony Giorgio.
Oh yeah, I'm Scott Evans. Uh, the Hartford side.
Chris Nelson, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You thinking we might have them like a panel or something or uh, just to coincidentally have them all on the same night and see what they have to say or?
I don't know, we might, we, we could schedule them for, have them come in and give a twenty-minute talk to us as to what they think would be better. Uh, encourage them to give us some ideas.
In, in the context of what could the zoning commission do to help them? Or what could the town or, you know, or what, what are they looking for?
We shouldn't constrain them, but our objective is to try to figure out ways to make our regs better. And I think they would recognize that too.
So I just want to get back to Tom Evans, Chris Nelson, Mark Greenberg, Tony Giorgio. Do you want to include the Silverman Group on it? Because they are, the four, the first four people that I mentioned are all subject to the pad regulations, town-wide, etc. The Silverman Group, really, that's specific to the Hartford form-based code.
Still would like to hear from them.
I know, but we could change it. If we could do something to help them market that property, we could change it.
No, no, that's fine. I will, I will include them on my list. I just wanted to ask that clarifying question, that's all.
Yeah, and Rich, and Rich Korea too, even though he doesn't have, you know, manage a property. But you know, he, he does get involved in a lot of the rentals of the smaller places in town.
So one, one thing I will say that, that Mr. Korea kind of put a, put something in my ear was about your industrial zone regs. Right now you have just under two-hundred-thousand square feet of vacant office space in Simsbury. Um, and that's, that is throughout the town. So he's at, he's, he's said that in the past, it's not related to the pad and I don't want to go too far off topic. Is looking at your industrial zone regs.
I think that's a, a good observation and, and you know, thanks, Rich, but I, I was thinking the same thing tonight as to what I might say about the application from one-hundred Griss Mill. I didn't know they had tabled it again or I wouldn't spend the time on it, but if you look at what, we have a number of issues where our town center code, as I think you mentioned, Ernie Dave. And our, our town-wide regulations are, they're different. And so I look at the uh, the question for one-hundred Griss Mill is its office space in an industrial zone, which is permitted, but uh, recreation isn't permitted there. But if you look in the town center zone, uh, there are, I think, four of the town center zones permit indoor, and it has the category of indoor recreation in the same spaces it has a category of office space. They, they're much different. And so we might just, you know, take a look at consolidating. Some of these are making, you know, the town-wide be more consistent with what the town center is. There's something along those lines, but some of the stuff we're agonizing over, you know, for these uh, locations that are not in the town center, if it was in the town center, no problem. It's, it's in the code. You can do it, you know, they're, they're listed there by examples of what you can do in those zones. And so where they overlap, I know we had this issue with, I think it was the guy who wanted to do the uh, the uh, bottle, and not bottling plant, but the.
Whiskey plant, yeah.
Yeah, the whiskey plant, that if he was, wanted to do it in the, the Hartford, in the area where the Hartford was, that zone, it's permitted for some reason down there, but it's not permitted, you know, in the center. And so we ask ourselves, you know, do we really need this aggravation? Why don't we get these things, you know, these uses consolidated better, uh, or more broadly stated or something? But two-hundred-thousand square feet is a lot of empty space.
And, and when I say that some of that space is vacant and some of it, um, former tenants are paying the rent still.
Yeah, I know.
So don't, yeah, but it's still vacant space. No, no bodies are coming into town to, to report to work in that, in those areas.
Right, and there's no computers sitting there that they're paying property tax on and that sort of.
Correct.
But you also have the people working at home and uh, required to work at home now and uh, that may change in a year.
Oh yeah, right, that two-hundred could be a lot higher down the road.
So it, it's just food for thought. It may be, I, I don't, I don't mean to go too far off uh, Dave's list, but the industrial zones, if you want to look at those or uses like that.
Okay.
Well, I think it, it hits us in the face if we start looking at these other two codes. That what they allow is different than what the town-wide code allows. And I wonder, maybe it's a, you know, we could talk about this at another time, but maybe some of this, if we're going to self-educate and get ourselves all up to a point where we can have a fully comprehensive discussion, we're going to be old and gray, I think. I'm wondering if we could get some sort of consulting helper, another, a third party from somewhere to make those sort of uh, comparisons of what happens in industrial zone in these three different, you know, coded areas, um, to help us, you know, jumpstart here. As I've done, just with the fact that you can have office space in exactly the same building on the first floor or an upper floor for indoor, indoor recreation, if you're in the center code. Why is that?
You know, we, we've hired outside consultants and they resulted in the center zone and the Hartford zone.
Yeah, I know.
And we're looking at those and saying, they're not really what we want.
They're not having, they're not having the effect that they were expected.
Professional, the professional planners are, I think, focused more on city and, and I don't know, larger kind of communities. I don't know, maybe somebody will come along.
No.
So let's, let's wrap up by saying we're going to go after the sign regulations and Mike's going to get us some of the data on uh, what's actually happened in terms of uh, taxes and school impact and those sort of police impact from the uh, apartments. Uh, I think what I've been told, and I, Mike will give us the real numbers, is that we we got back like sixty percent of what we lost in the Hartford in terms of uh, real estate taxes. When these apartments came in. So they have helped us a lot if they haven't impacted much in the way of schools. But we'll see that data.
Okay. Well, the other one I, maybe you talked about it already, but the, there was a statement in here, I forget which category it's under where there's a question raised about whether um, uh, it always requires a text amendment to get permitted, a permit to do a development. I'm, I'm not sure that's true. I wondered if the town staff, somehow that could be a, a little project at some point to, you know, look at the last couple of years and see if developments really are all associated with text amendments.
The ones, I think that came from uh, our experience with the center zone applications. I think almost all of them have required a text amendment. But not that many. And you know, we've got.
Okay.
The uh, Tim's Croft property that supposedly is, is going to be a development. And uh, our center zone doesn't permit any commercial in that spot.
What's the Tips property?
Pardon?
Sims Croft.
Sims Croft.
Sims Croft.
Oh, 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 oh.
An Iron Horse.
It doesn't permit.
Any commercial component in that development.
Yeah, it was intended for condos or apartments.
Apartments, but you know, you gotta walk across Iron Horse and up the hill to get to Starbucks. And there's a still crossing there.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, I hear you. Actually, the road was supposed to be, because I was reminding someone yesterday that the, that center code, the concept that we, we cut it off early, but the consultants had a road drawn right through where that connecting building was just built at Saint Mary's Church. They put a road from plant, from seminar, from Hot Meadow Street right through the campus of Saint Mary's Church. Assuring us, hearing their ideas, that that, that would be a future plan when the church isn't there anymore. But we felt like we needed to be more concerned about the here and now and what the priest would think of these drawings. So we, we had those drawings and the concept eliminated uh, before it got too widely spread. But, uh, you know, so there were, there, you know, the intention was that it wouldn't be, you know, one set of regulations and never need amending, but I'm not here to defend the center code. I was there, but it is what it is. And the question is, how much good is it doing us and could we tinker with it and get something more effective out of it? And I'm all for that.
Yeah, those individual text things have been tinkering. It was, you know, the storyteller's cottage, I mean, why wouldn't that be in the center? And then the uh, the whiskey place and a brew pub, you would think all of those would be suitable for the downtown and they weren't allowed.
Yeah, but I'm not sure you could have thought of it. Was there a brew pub around here anywhere in two thousand and eleven? When we wrote that stuff?
Not in town, but.
Was there a?
They weren't around.
Well, yeah, okay, I, I'm not going to dispute your memory, but it just didn't, it didn't come up. It wasn't dismissed. It just didn't come up.
Yeah, but another one was the uh, bike guys that were remanufacturing them.
Oh yeah. Yeah.
So almost everything that's happened has, has required us to tinker with it. Anyway.
Well, and, and in some ways that's good because there's new things happening in the environment. Somehow we're able to accommodate them.
Yep. Anything else you guys want to talk about?
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
I guess.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second, oh.
Second by Bruce.